Good evening. It is Monday, June 12, 2023, and the time is 6:02 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and notice the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. The board will now go into closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. No formal action will be taken in the closed meeting, and we should return here by 6:30 At 3:00 PM, the board will now reconvene from our closed meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad you're here. Tonight, we have Fred Bacon, who is the pastor of First Christian Church, to deliver our invocation. And then, once Fred is finished, we have Junior ROTC Cadet from Potite High School Alexandra Lopez that will lead our pledges of allegiance. So at this time, I would like to invite you, if you'd like, to please stand for our invocation and the pledges.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Gracious Father, in heaven, we continue to offer up gratitude to be able to live in a great place like Mesquite. Lord, we want to pray for these men and women who serve on the school board, such a very important job they have to do to guide the education of our children. We pray for wisdom for each of them. We pray for insight. Lord, we pray that you would give them the wherewithal to be the very best that they can be for our community and for our kids. Lord, we pray for each school. We pray for each teacher. We pray your blessings as they get a chance maybe to relax and rest a little bit and prepare for the upcoming school year. Thank you for your love and your grace in our life, and we ask it all in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Alexandra. And Fred, thank you very much as well. Next on our agenda is the board moment. I don't know if we have anyone here from the PTA this evening? Okay. Okay. And board, I don't know if any one of you have anything you'd like to mention regarding this meeting or anything that's on your mind? If not, the next item on the agenda will move to student and staff guests. Ms. Jobe?
Thank you, Mr. Everett. We have a special recognition this evening for a Porter Elementary School teacher. Fourth-grade bilingual teacher, Robert Cerber, is being presented with the Life Saving Award tonight. Last month, he was alerted to a student choking during lunch. He rushed to the student and performed the Heimlich maneuver, which saved the student's life. So we'd like to recognize him for his outstanding act.
Our next recognition is for our Ready, Set, Teach students. We're pleased to recognize 34 students here receiving letters of intent to hire from Mesquite ISD, thanks to two unique programs our district offers to future educators. These recent graduates represent all five traditional high schools and have enrolled in the Ready, Set, Teach and Child Guidance Early Learning programs for their junior and senior years, where they have maintained an A or B average in the course and graduated with an overall GPA of 3.0 or higher. The students have also received the recommendation of their teacher in the RST program. Their official teaching contracts with MISD are contingent upon these students earning a bachelor's degree, maintaining a 3.0 GPA in college, passing all necessary certification
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our audience portion.
exams, a clean criminal background check, and being recommended by their university for a standard teaching certificate. So we're pleased to offer this opportunity and look forward to seeing these 34 MISD
If you're here and you would like to address this board on an item that is on our printed
graduates back in four years teaching in our classrooms. And here's a short video that will introduce these graduates to you.
agenda, we'll hear from you at this time. Do we have anyone, Laura?
I have her.
Okay. We'll have a public hearing on our budget and tax rate later on in the meeting. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the consent agenda as listed. Is there any discussion?
I have one comment. One of the items that's in the consent agenda is one that we review every year as a board to reaffirm our annual ethics statement. I'd just like to remind everybody that it's got some great information in there, but the number one item at the top of the list is, "I will continuously be guided by what is best for all students of the district," which I think this board continuously does. But I wanted to make sure if people understood that this was at the top of our ethics statement.
Good, thank you, Robert. Anybody else have any other comments or discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports of the superintendent and personnel.
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. It's honor. It's hiring season. We're at the pike of hiring season, and I'm excited to announce and do the report tonight for latest hires. And so we have a series of people that we're going to announce today. We're going to start with our Director of Budget Analytics and Position Control. So I'm going to ask Mr. Prado if he can go up to the lectern and introduce his selection for this position.
Good evening, President Everett, board members, Dr. Rivera. I want to thank you for supporting the administration's recommendation for tonight for the Budget of Analytics and Position Control. Mr. Trace Naylor, if you would come up to the podium, please. Congratulations, Trace.
Thank you.
Trace has eight years of experience working in the accounting field. He has been an employee of the MISD for the last two years as an accountant, has done absolutely excellent work in payroll, budget, and finance, and assistant in the management of position control. He has been an integral part of the budget team this budget season, creating a new budget process to assist department leaders in identifying the funding needs of their cost centers. Trace has a Lean Six Sigma Green Belt certification, I need one of those, that focuses on processes and improvements. He has a bachelor's in accounting from the Oklahoma Christian University, and in his free time, Trace enjoys spending time with his wife and two kids and cheering on the Saints.
I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. The business office has some unbelievable people, very smart and talented, and that's one of the major reasons I'm excited to join their leadership team. Beyond that, I'd like to help, you know, improve the processes that we work on and to continue to grow that, along with continuing to serve the district. So thank you.
Welcome, Trace.
Thank you, Trace. We're also going to go and name a few principal selections that we made. And so I'm going to start with our selection for the Principal of McDonald Middle School. So Tanisha Jackson, please walk to the lectern as I read your bio. Ms. Tanisha Jackson began her career 15 years ago, serving as a high school English teacher. Since then, she has served as a K-12 Assistant Principal, Elementary Principal in Residence, and most recently, High School Deputy Principal in 40 ISD. Ms. Jackson earned her bachelor's degree for University of Alaska in Anchorage. She earned a master's degree in educational leadership from Lamar University, and she's world traveler because she's, you know, was raised in the military. So welcome, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Rivera and board members. I stand before you proud with gratitude and admit its honor this evening. It's a great pleasure and enthusiasm that I express my heartfelt thanks for the opportunity to serve as Principal of McDonald Middle School. Dr. Rivera, your unwavering commitment to educational excellence and dedication to fostering nurturing environment for all students is inspiring, and I am humbled and honored to have your trust of this important responsibility. To the incredible teachers and staff who make the school such a remarkable place, the impact on their lives, on students' lives, is immeasurable, and I'm truly humbled to be such part of such an exceptional team. Together, we will continue to provide our students with education that nurtures talents and instills in them a love for learning and equips them with the skills they need to thrive in this ever-changing world. And to the students of McDonald Middle School, you are the reason we are here today. It is my utmost privilege to serve as your principal and to guide you on this incredible journey of self-discovery and academic growth. I promise to do everything in my power to create a safe and inclusive work or environment where each student can reach their full potential. And last but certainly not least, I want to express my deepest gratitude to my family and to my friends, whose unwavering support and love have been the pillars of my personal and professional journey. As I embark on this incredible journey, I am filled with hope, excitement, and a deep sense of responsibility. Thank you again. Northside Pride.
If Trace, you and or Tanisha, if you have family that are here, we invite you to introduce them as well, if you'd like.
I come with my husband, Courtney Jackson.
And I'm having a wife, McKinsey.
Well, now, continuing with our next principal appointment, and continuing with the Gator Pride here, Courtney Cross is Principal of Bedford-Galloway Elementary. Courtney has completed 11 years in the field of education. She started her career at Terry Middle School, holding the position of seventh-grade RLA teacher and success, student success coordinator in 2021. She began serving as Assistant Principal at Galloway Elementary. She earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in education from Gremlin State University and a Master's of Education degree from Lamar University. So Courtney, lectern's yours.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First, I would like to thank my Lord and Savior for truly ordering my steps here to this podium tonight. Dr. Rivera and board, thank you for this opportunity to be the leader of Galloway Elementary. It's an honor and a privilege, and I'm so excited to do this work. I would like to take this time to acknowledge some people in one place that has helped mold me into the educator and the leader that I am today. First, I'd like to acknowledge my undergrad institution, Gremlin State University. It's a small HBCU full of tradition and pride, and my time at Gremlin taught me that anything worth having is worth working really hard for. Next, I'd like to thank Kelly Pruitt. Kelly saw something in me years ago at Terry, and when I told her I was thinking about going down the administrative path, she did everything she could to put me in situations to grow and to help me learn, and I can't thank her enough for fanning my flame. I'd also like to thank my current leader, April Sarpe. It's difficult to put into words. It's difficult to put into words how much our relationship means to me. Your leadership, love for people, and guidance has been the greatest example of a dynamic leader. I cannot thank you enough for believing in me and pouring into me. I'd also like to thank my family and friends, including everyone here tonight and those who are watching online. To my husband, Victor, thank you for being my rock. Thank you for always being willing to carry the load. And to my son, Kai, I hope you can watch this one day and be very proud of me. My parents, Stephen and Annette, thank you for doing everything possible to ensure that my siblings and I had a better life. Your sacrifices were never in vain. I'm only here today because I have both of you as parents. And then finally, to my Galloway family. There is quite literally no other staff I want to embark on this journey with. Thank you for your faith in me, as, thank you for putting your faith in me to be your leader. I'm so excited to see the great things that we will accomplish together. Thank you.
So, so ask your people to stand, Courtney.
This is my mom, and then, and then all my, my people.
Well, you have your own section. That's remarkable. So our next appointment is not here tonight, but I wanted to recognize her. You know, she's, she's, she's traveling the United States with her husband, but I wanted to recognize her. And many of you know that Rutherford Elementary became vacant because we called the previous leader to a very important role in our district. She happens to be here, so Dr. Grubbs, would you mind standing up and waving? She's going to be our new executive principal. Executive Principal of School Improvement, and I know that she's going to do an amazing job helping our principals in our school district move forward and into the future. But Ms. Wilburn will be following Dr. Grubbs as the Principal of Sam Rutherford Elementary. And I want to read, I want to read her bio. But then she tasked me with reading her comments. So I'm going to honor her in doing so. So Cassie Wilburn, as she's known to all of us, earned her bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies from TMNUC Commerce and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction from TAMU as well. She earned her principal certificate to Lamar University. Mrs. Wilburn has served in public ed for 20 years, all in MISD. She started her career at Kimbrough as a special educational paraprofessional, then served as sixth-grade teacher and instructional specialist for 10 years at Kennedy Elementary. Most recently, she served as Assistant Principal at Rutherford for eight years. So you can't get more homegrown than Cassie Wilburn. Her comments. She says she first would like to thank the school board for your vote of confidence and approval in this new position as Principal of Rutherford. It will truly be an honor to lead such a creative and highly qualified staff of educators. Secondly, she would like to thank the support of her family throughout her educational career. Being educators themselves, they know too well the dedication and desire for excellence the job requires. Lastly, but not least, you'd like to thank God for the opportunity to be a blessing to Rutherford community. She grew up in this community, having attended Rutherford herself. And she's beyond thrilled to continue to uphold the high expectations set by the previous leaders. She says that she uses the power of prayer quite frequently in her house, and my cause has definitely been enlarged, and she is truly blessed to be called to be the leader of Rutherford. So that is Ms. Wilburn. All right, our next appointment, and many of you probably don't know, but Bridget Mitchell, the Principal of Thompson Elementary, was called to lead another campus, Kimball Elementary. So she'll be transitioning from Thompson to Kimball and continuing the tradition of excellence in Kimball. So we had a vacancy to fill, and so the, our selection for Principal of Thompson Elementary is Candace Griffin. So Candace Griffin, please approach the lectern as I read. Ms. Griffin has earned a Bachelor of Arts from Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University in Business Administration and obtained her Master of Educational Leadership from DBU. Her educational career started as a fourth-grade teacher in DeSoto. The journey continued to a charter school where she was an ESL and Reading Interventionist. She then transitioned into a master teacher role at Adams Middle School in Grand Prairie ISD, where she had the opportunity to coach and grow teachers. She has six years of administrative experience, this started as an Assistant Principal at Alexander Elementary in Duncanville, and now she served the last three years as a principal in Highlands Elementary in Cedar Hill Independent School District. Welcome, Candace.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Rivera, Board of Trustees, I am so excited to be here to serve students in Mesquite ISD. I'm mostly excited to meet my new students at Thompson and get to know them and form relationships, also work with the current teachers and staff to continue those great traditions that they have there, as well as continue to push excellence forward, and meet the parents and community to understand them and to really support them as they are here to support our children so that they can have this great experience at Thompson Elementary. I am excited, I am honored, I am humbled to do this work with such great people, and I'm excited to meet all of the individuals that I will embark here at Mesquite ISD. And I've already had multiple people that have come up to me and introduced themselves, so I feel that warm welcome, and I am ready to serve. Thank you so much, and I appreciate everything.
Do you have any family with you, Candace?
Yes, I do. My mom came in from Atlanta, Georgia this morning, and my cousin here, Angela, who is here in Texas, and this is my support.
Well, welcome. And we also have some coordinators that will be named. I'm going to call Dr. Hammett to the lectern to take over that portion.
All right, I have three coordinators to welcome this evening. The first is Alicia Upton. Alicia, would you please stand? Alicia will be our Coordinator for College Career Military Ready. Alicia has 15 years of educational experience and all have been served here in Mesquite ISD. She started teaching at Horn High School, where she has taught English, speech, debate, and public speaking. In 2013, she moved to the position of Advanced Academic Coordinator, where over the years, she has significantly increased the number of students taking dual-credit courses, has increased the number of students taking AP courses, has promoted PSAT and SAT, and facilitated FAFSA labs to support our parents and students in FAFSA completion. Through this position, she has also supported Horn High School students and families in making more informed decisions about life after high school. Ms. Upton has a Bachelor of Arts in Communication Studies from the University of North Texas, and we want to say welcome to teaching and learning, Alicia. And my next coordinator this evening is Cynthia Patino. Thank you, Cynthia. It's an honor to stand here for Dr. Feinglass and introduce her Coordinator for Family and Community Engagement. Cynthia is currently mine in my department, and I'm excited to share her and her expertise with Leslie. But Cynthia has been in education for 13 years, and all of those years have been in Mesquite ISD. She served as a bilingual teacher for five years, a bilingual instructional specialist for two years, and has served the last six years as our family engagement facilitator. She graduated from Texas A&amp;M Commerce with a bachelor's in education and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. Welcome to the FACE Committee. And the last coordinator this evening is Michelle Romanowski. Michelle Romanowski will be serving as our ESL Coordinator next year. She has 11 years of educational experience and all have been served here in Mesquite ISD. She started teaching at McDonald Middle School, where she spent five years teaching both eighth-grade English and ESL, as well as served as the campus avid director. She then spent four years at North Mesquite High School, where she taught ninth and 10th grade ESL, and was avid director before transitioning to the position of Campus ESL Coordinator. For the past two years, Michelle Romanowski has served in the role of District ESL Lead Teacher, where she has developed English curriculum for second-language learners for all middle schools, as well as supported campus leadership teams with instructional strategies that best serve the needs of our emergent bilinguals. Michelle has a Bachelor of Science in interdisciplinary studies from Texas A&amp;M University and a Master's in Curriculum and Instruction from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. Welcome to teaching and learning, Michelle.
So, Mr. President, we also have some Assistant Principals that are welcoming to the administrative ranks for this year. And I'm going to let Laura Jobe introduce those to you.
It's my pleasure to introduce a couple of new Assistant Principals. Randy Poole, would you please stand?
Mr. Poole has completed 10 years in the field of education, all at Mesquite High School. He began his career as a social studies teacher, and in 2021, he moved into the instructional specialist role. Randy earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in History and Humanities and a Master's in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from the University of Texas at Arlington, and he will be the new Assistant Principal at North Mesquite High School. Welcome. And now, if Mr. Conrad Leonard would stand. Mr. Leonard is also going to North Mesquite High School as an AP, and he's completed 15 years in the field of education. He was previously a special education paraprofessional and teacher in Garland ISD. In 2015, Conrad moved into the role of Special Education Coordinator at the Academy of Dallas Charter School. And for the last five years, he's been in Richardson ISD as a special education and most recently served as an administrative intern at Richardson High School. Conrad earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Kinesiology and Sports Studies and a Master's in Elementary Education from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations.
Mr. President, those are the hires for the month of June from administration.
If I could say one more thing, but for those who have been appointed to new positions tonight, if you would meet Mr. Odom, Wade Odom, out in the hallway so we can get your photograph, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, everyone that has assumed those roles. Please know that you'll have the full support of our superintendent and staff and this board, as well as you he moved into the instructional specialist role. Randy earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in history and humanities and a master's in educational leadership and policy studies from the University of Texas at Arlington. And he will be the new assistant principal at North Mesquite High School. Welcome. And now if Mr. Conrad Leonard would stand. Mr. Leonard is also going to North Mesquite High School as an AP. And he's completed 15 years in the field of education. He was previously a special education paraprofessional and teacher in Garland ISD. In 2015, Conrad moved into the role of special education coordinator at the Academy of Dallas Charter School. And for the last five years, he's been in Richardson ISD as a special education and most recently served as an administrative intern at Richardson High School. Conrad earned his Bachelor of Science degree in kinesiology and sports studies and a master's in elementary education from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations.
Mr. President, those are the hires for the month of June from administration.
If I could say one more thing, but for those who have been appointed to new positions tonight, if you would meet Mr. Odom, Wade Odom, out in the hallway so we can get your photograph, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations everyone that has assumed those roles. Please know that you'll have the full support of our superintendent and staff and this board, as well as you fulfill your obligation to the students of this particular school district. Board, if it's okay with you, we'll take about a five-minute break. Okay, the time is now 6:56 PM. We'll reconvene from our recess. And the next item on the agenda is to hear an effectiveness report on the career in technical education. I believe we'll hear from Christy Cradja. Welcome, Christy.
Okay. How are you guys tonight? Good? Okay. So I am going to give you your report tonight on the CTE department and what we have done. I'm starting, Taylor says I only have six minutes, so I'm going to, um... Yeah. But sorry, it's probably going to take, um, I don't know. But anyway, I'm going to start with a video at the beginning and we'll start there and then I'll go.
So our CTE showcase is geared for our seventh grade students and parents to kind of tour and see what kind of programs we have to offer. When it comes to Mesquite ISD, we have our Vanguard Program of Study and what they have to offer. And then our traditional home camp, there's Mesquite, North Mesquite, Potte, Horn, and West Mesquite.
If it doesn't by the time you're a senior, I have a class that's a practicum. When we go to the police departments, all the law.
We'd like the, the students to visit each table. And it shows all 34 programs of study that we offer. They can talk with the teachers of those programs, kind of see what they'd be doing in that class. There's some hands-on activities for them to do. That way they can see what they're interested in. Maybe they, they don't, they can go ahead and mark off. This is our second year to host the CTE, so okay. We're doing this when they come into their eighth grade year. And in the fall, they start touring Vanguard to see if they're wanting to make that choice. And then they host the discovery night at Vanguard. So we want them to see all their options at their traditional high school campuses. That way they can make that decision. Because at that time, they had to put an interest form to see whether they got in in the fall.
I'm here to learn about either Vanguard or Horn. Vanguard is mostly like, you can actually get paid by doing the things. While Horn, you can do them and get a job later.
Um, I mean, mainly in tourist, um, to this fire burning and the vet.
I found engineering actually nice because you get paid a while. And I found cooking because I really like cooking.
They were adding a new vet science program at school year. It'd be housed at North Mesquite High School. 11th grade year will be veterinary and science class and it's mostly labs. So we'll do a lot of hands-on diagnostics work that you would do in a vet clinic. And then they'll graduate with a couple of different industry-based certifications in the vet science still. And our, all of our programs are expanding. We've also hosted a film festival that, that's been happening every year with our ABF Keaton. Also, we decided a made-to-teach program. And we're expanding our teaching and learning program of study. And we're starting earlier on. Once our students go through that program, they can come out with numerous college hours through Dallas College and have a guaranteed teaching contract with Mesquite ISD.
The kids are excited. I have more than enough kids that are willing to sign up for the program. And I think it's awesome because the kids are going to be able to start in middle school and work their way through high school and get out earlier and start teaching earlier.
Also in our middle schools, we have a course at all 10 little schools starting next year. And it's our career survey and this getting careers course.
Okay, have y'all Bluetooth it to the thing? Click the connect button.
They have 15 different modules that all meet with our program of study throughout. And they have two-week rotations and they're able to kind of do a little hands-on activity where a little bit about each of those programs of study. And they rotate through those different modules throughout the whole school year.
However, but y'all are going to cut off the top, trace that pattern, and then you can come back and cut some more. Okay? Students have the chance to experience many different careers that normally in the middle school setting, they wouldn't even get the chance to even experience any of that.
All of our programs of study now are typically four years. So that senior level course, we're looking at more practicum work and work-based learning. And hopefully have some internship placement. And we do our industry-based certification so that students, when they graduate, they're ready to go into the workforce. Even if they're going on to college, they still have something they can do work through college.
This class helps me because it's one of the classes where I can pick the different things I like to learn about.
It taught me how to do woodwork, showed me how to use a three printer. And now it's showing me how to solve crimes and all that.
Okay. So our programs of study, we have, all of them are listed up here. And we have over 30 of them right now. The ones that are in green are offered at all of our campuses with the exception of welding. It's kind of only at three campuses, so we don't have that at every campus at this point. The blue, the ones in blue are at Vanguard only. And then the orange are the cross-entity programs where they're specific campuses, but the kids travel for each, each program. So they go back and forth through our transportation. Our dual-credit, those are the dual-credit opportunities that our kids have through CTE at this point. So last year, we earned, our students earned 640 hours, saving our MISD families by $50,560. So they get that opportunity, which helps them. Our industry-based certifications is something that we're proud of this year. We have really tried to step up the amount of certifications that we're offering. And we have to line them up with our programs of study. So last year, our total certifications was 1376, 1,376. This year, at this point, there are 2,129. And we're not finished because our data is always incomplete until August 31st because that's when you can submit the last of your, our students are till testing. So they don't have to be 18. So it takes a while to get them all through the, the system. And we get them all counted and everything else. So we have a column, the CCMR recognized is all of the certifications that are part of accountability. The non-CCMR recognized are things like CPR, OSHA 10, things that our kids, we want them to have because they're great to have. And they're, it gives them a leg up usually in their employment, gives them some kind of skills to start with. And employers like to know that they have a little bit of experience in that area. Okay. Our CTSOs, which is our, our CTE student organizations. Again, our numbers were a little higher this year. So we're working hard to try to get all of our students involved in the CTSOs. They're co-curricular and they help students develop citizenship, technical, and leadership skills. So it's really a good opportunity for kids if we can try to get them all participating and working on, um, learning all the different things that we have and, and doing things that they are familiar with. All right, next year, we are starting our veterinary science program. And it is going to start at North Mesquite next year. We are in the process of renovating the construct, old construction lab that moved to Vanguard. Next year, we are doing a, a pilot. Well, it's, it's, it's the North Mesquite kids only. And it's a non-lab class. So they will, they will start the program, uh, program of study, the veterinary science. And then the following year, it will be open to the rest of the other five traditional high schools. So everybody can do the cross-entity or they can sign up or be traveling by buses like the other, the other courses. So we try to give everybody an opportunity to take as many courses as they can. And that's why it's kind of important that the buses are still transporting our kids to and from so we can make sure they all have what they need. So next year, when we start, we'll start with the principles of veterinary science, which will be two credits. And again, that starts next year. Then the following year, we'll add veterinary science one. And then the following year, we'll add practicum of veterinary science. So it'll be three, three years of going through the program. So this is just our good start this year coming up. Okay, our Ready Set Teach is our teaching and training program, which is Ready Set Teach. Our Made To Teach, you saw part of that on the video, was when they were getting hyped up and trying to get teachers or kids excited about being in the program. We are expanding our Ready Set Teach program to help with the teacher shortage. And that's our idea is to get kids interested in teaching sooner. So we're going to pushing, we're pushing down a couple of our, um, pushing down our intro class for teaching and learning to two of our middle schools next year, which is McDonald and Fraser. And that's just hopeful, in hopes that we can get kids started, like I said earlier, and get more kids going through the process. We're currently beginning the PTEC planning year as we're gearing up to launch in August of 2024. And students who complete the program will earn their Associate of Arts in Teaching. So our goal for this is to have the students continue on to Dallas College and complete their Bachelor of Education program. And since they have earned their, since they will have earned their guaranteed teacher contract through this program and educational aid certification, they'll be able to work in the district earlier whilst going to school to complete their degree and be completely certified. The Vanguard Fire Academy, so we've spent the last year and a half going through the application process to certify our Vanguard Fire Academy with the state. We're certified now through the TCFP, which is equivalent to RTEA for those of you in the fire world. We have a letter of agreement with Wiley Fire Department. And that's for us to rent their facility for training, for live burns, and just any kind of hands-on training that we have. They're, they're excited to have us. They, when I met with the chief, they were eager to work with us because they're hoping that Wiley ISD will eventually have a program out there that corresponds with their, with their fire department. So other high schools that have, um, other, there's other high schools in the state that have a fire academy or fire program, but they're not, they're not a fire academy like ours. They are run under the city, so they're not their own. We're going to be our own entity, so there's only two in the state. It's going to be the ones in Mesquite ISD and then in Austin ISD, where they have, I think, LBJ High School. So we can actually have our own person training our kids. That's the, what it looks like, the certification. These are some of the, the pictures where they've gotten to go out and do some of the, some of the things with the, the fire department. And then Dallas College, in our program at Vanguard, we'll be able to add this fire science certificate program that includes 18 hours of fire science courses. So again, that's taught by our own instructor and that's dual-credit classes that would cost them money to be, to have to earn at, you know, like, would it say 1422? But for us, it'd be, it's free for them because they're doing it through our own fire science program. We have other stuff going on in the district, but I just kind of hit it a few, hit a few highlights this time. We, you know, we, we're, our, our automotive and auto body is becoming ASE certified. So we're in the process of finishing that up. So we've got a lot of different things that we're always moving and they're all different. So we stay busy. Questions? Mesquite, Mesquite, the city of Mesquite doesn't have their own training place. No. And, and Garland actually... And Garland actually, just, do they have, they have one. So, but we couldn't use Garland because they were already full. They had other people using theirs. So we contracted with Wiley. And one of our, one of our teachers, oh, he's not a teacher, but he's a firefighter, and he assists with our program. He actually works for the Wiley Fire Department and got us a good, good contact. So it's very cool.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristi, good report. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is under administration. It's an action item to issue certificates of election and administer the oath of office for places three, four, and five on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Thomas, can this be, can these oaths of office be done all three together?
He's saying one at a time.
One at a time? Okay.
Texas, pray for your family, pray after me. I, Gary Bingham.
I, Gary Bingham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
Will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
School trustee, place three.
School trustee, place three.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And this state, so help me God.
I, Greg Everett.
I, Greg Everett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
School trustee, place four.
School trustee, place four.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Attorney, may I ask your name?
I, Robert Stewart.
I, Robert Stewart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
School trustee, place five.
School trustee, place five.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Attorney gave that ruling. Because he knew that they went up there together, but when she said, "I, state your name", they'd all say, "State your name".
Nobody called on you, Mr. Rose. Congratulations, Mr. Bingham and Mr. Stewart. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an action item regarding the organization of the board, the election of board officers. Mr. Morris, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. All right. We will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'm going to this board elect the following officers to assume their official positions when this current meeting is adjourned. President Elaine Hornsby, Vice President Robert Stewart, and Secretary Kevin Carba.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Ms. Collier. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations. And the last item under administration is to hear a report on the Emerging Leaders Program. Dr. Legg Donna Gully, welcome.
You so much for allowing me to come out and talk about one of my favorite things, right? Thank you, our wonderful board of trustees and of course, our cabinet members. I'm going to start by just taking a look at our mission because I will tell you that we have really worked hard to live up to this. And the Emerging Leaders Program and framework is all about making sure that we are growing empathetic and effective and resourceful leaders through historical studies, skill development, and diverse skilled leadership opportunities. We want to cultivate our students' unique abilities and make sure that we are making an impact on our community. And we feel like our students are definitely working towards that. And so when we talked about outcomes when we started this program, and it was truly just an idea three years ago, we talked about we wanted to make sure that our students had effective communication skills, interpersonal skills, and overall really develop their leadership attributes, things like project development and problem solving. We also wanted to make sure that our students have a positive attitude about the community that they live in and that they really work hard to accentuate that each and every day, that they have awareness about their leadership potential, and that they really look at culture through the lens of student-led projects, school events, community supports, and of course, DFW partnerships. And we are continuing in that, those endeavors there. And so as you take a look at this three-year program, it is truly three years. We ask our students to commit to coming to the after-school component for two years and then making a decision about joining and becoming a part of our leadership class, which is exactly one year. The goal is that our students, at the end of their journey and as they're walking across that stage, they now know exactly where their leadership attributes lie and what they have to give to the community. That not only they live in, but potentially what they'll do in their futures. And so if you take a look at the overall growth to leadership in Mesquite ISD with our students, we really work hard to create programming that we feel that will best serve our students. And as you take a look at this picture here, this is actually from a few weeks ago with our Celebration of Knowledge, where our students really compete against each other and not only have a really great time, but they really do some really great learning, everything from something like an escape room to really being able to highlight their passions to all of their peers. It really is a great example of how we promote our core values within our school district. And so as you take a look at our timeline, first and foremost, I'm really excited to announce that next week, our Navigating Excellence course will be reviewed by the state of Texas as a course for all Texas students. And so we have our fingers crossed and toes too. We're hoping that that definitely is approved. We have also worked really hard to train some new staff. I do have staff that is staying because they love the program and they love what we offer, but we will have some people coming on board. And then, of course, we start our recruitment of students and duty after-school component. Mark your calendars for October, that's Monday, October 23rd, 2023, because that will be our fall social, right? And then, of course, in May of next year, we will have our senior interviews, our Celebration of Knowledge, and our senior luncheon. Yes, I will be tired at the end of May next year, right? And then, of course, this will be the first graduation where all of our emerging leaders will stand and be recognized by you and of course, our superintendent, Dr. Rivera. So that is just exciting to know that, that has moved in such a way for our school district. Also, when we talk about our summer timeline and what we are preparing for right now, right? Y'all love that picture, right? It is all about the creation of student documents, deepening the requirements for student voice throughout our district. And then we've also looked at a flipped classroom component for our students who are CTSOs, as Kristi mentioned earlier with CTE, also our athletics, our athletes, and also our fine art students. So we are hoping and predicting that we will have anywhere between 500 to 800 emerging leaders in the fall. So that is really a wonderful accomplishment. The other part about how we build our student leaders, I'm telling you, it is just amazing in terms of how our students really work on relationship building with each other. They really seek out each other across campuses and high, and different high schools. And they really want to get to know each other. And they constantly ask us for opportunities for them to get together. So we really feel that we are really building just not only relationships, but students really having the opportunity to get to know each other. Our students also participated in the PTA Rally Day, and that was magnificent. And they got a chance to stand and talk to some of you and talk about legislation and what is happening down in Austin. It was a true benefit. And I also have a video here so that you can actually hear them a little bit.
So Emerging Leaders is a leadership club. It's at all of the Mesquite high schools. And through this club, you can learn leadership skills and then also be able to apply that to getting engaged with the community. It's an environment where I can be a leader. When I was younger, I thought like president's, oh, you're a leader. If you're a CEO, you're a leader. But I never like considered myself someone who was able to be a leader.
Emerging leaders is a good first step for the students because then I think that they will be okay with putting themselves out there in college.
I wasn't even planning on going to college because I didn't want to start in a new environment. But just because it's scary doesn't mean it's bad.
I dragged like all my friends to the first meeting, so they had to join with me. It's just like probably the, my most favorite club I've ever been in. It's so much fun.
We're all almost like-minded in a way, even though we're in different organizations and we seem like we have different personalities. The fact that we believe that we have what it takes to step up, when we need to step up, that's like one thing that we all have in common.
What I love about emerging leaders is the like family bond we have with each other. So our sponsors, Ms. John and Ms. Boyet, they're really like mother figures towards a lot of us.
At West Mesquite Emerging Leaders, we say, "That's not very emerging leaders-like." We use that phrase, and we call each other champions, using that words and phrases, not just in action. I think that really helps them grow.
I think I love the environment and just how we get to experience new things. Like when we went to Austin, like that was somewhere I've never been.
I guess the Austin trip to the Capitol was the, was the best trip. It was, it was tiring, it was long, but it was impactful.
We took our kids to the Human Rights Museum downtown in Dallas.
And there was just like so many things that I didn't like know beforehand, so many details.
Got to learn a little bit about the Holocaust, and we reflected on that.
From my freshman year to senior year, I have gained a lot of confidence in myself. So I'm able to just put myself in different organizations and feel at home with them.
Emerging leaders gave me the mic to be able to do that. It empowered me to be able to speak up.
Like being able to express your voice in a way that's not hurting anyone else or is not affecting the way you want your voice to be heard.
I've learned not to be so shut off and so closed-minded. Definitely that you have to open your mind to different ideas.
We've taught them how to have mature conversations about them, how to ask questions and have a willingness and desire to learn instead of just voice their own opinion. But also, when they do have an opinion, how they voice in a constructive way.
Ideally, I want to become a diplomat. So being able to have multiple skills, interacting with others, like that's super important to what I'm trying to do.
Everyone can be a leader, but Emerging Leaders has like brought that out of me, and it's allowed me to exercise that part of myself.
I've learned to let my voice be heard no matter what. Some people don't have that ability to let other people hear their voice. So you can be a role model and you can be that voice for someone else.
Leading is not just bossing around, but it's also to serve others with their heart and not just with their words or actions.
So it's just a way to kind of serve as a key to creating a path that they didn't know yet.
Wow, pretty cool, right, to hear from our students. The learning that they're receiving is just so beneficial. We've seen students who could not say one sentence in front of anyone else just really be able to talk and not stop. And that is what you want. You want to build that confidence, and you want to build that level of understanding on a deep level, who you are in your own journey. So really excited about that. It also exudes what we believe, not only in terms of our core values, but also when we talk about the Mesquite promise, that every single one of our students were made to excel. They belong here, their dignity is a given, and they are difference makers. Finally, I just wanted to have the opportunity to spotlight our sponsors because I will tell you that so many of them signed up two years ago, and they didn't have a clue what they were signing up for. They just knew that, wow, this might be something special, and I want to be a part of it. And so I just want to kind of just let you see their faces and their names. Demi Waters at Mesquite High School, Lindsey Hunt at Vanguard, Kyla Nelson at Mesquite High School, Ty Bell at Potte High School. Yeah. That Ashley Jeffrey Blackwell, who thinks he is Brad Pitt. Then Yan John at West Mesquite, Alyssa Boyet at West Mesquite. Zach, I'm sorry, Hayden Saipak at Vanguard. Abigail Kruekenberg at the Academy. Then you have Jacqueline Saipak at Vanguard. You have Zach Breminger at North Mesquite. And then you have Asha Andrews at North Mesquite. You have Brittany Stafford at Horn. Kathy Quigley, who is at Mesquite High School, and Kristen Hayward at North Mesquite. Some of these people that you see, they have all come back or they have chosen something that they want to really specialize with our leaders that we are creating here. And I cannot thank them enough. Finally, I just want to thank you for supporting us and backing us and, and having the vision with, you know, with, with us. How can you help? Our students are always needing leadership opportunities. And so if you want to mentor, you want to, you have an apprenticeship, you have a business that you think our students might be able to be a part of, any type of leadership opportunity, project development, or community involvement, please contact me because our students want to jump in, they want to get involved. They want to be in the ring, and that's exactly what we want for all of our leaders. Any questions?
No question. I just wanted to say to you, last year, you know, when we had the dinner and we were there, the board members were there, I ate with the kids, and sitting at that table was so revealing because they had conversations that were very in-depth. They asked you questions that like, okay, you're going to have to come up with a really good answer. So I was so impressed with them. So thank you for inviting us. It was really a unique experience. I loved it.
Thank you, thank you.
Great job, Dr. Gully.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to jump in and leadership has taken hold in Mesquite ISD. And if you have not seen it from the video, the evidence in the video Dr. Gully has shared, as you visit campuses, you start to see the tide turn in terms of leadership. You heard it from the kids, they didn't think they were leaders because in the past, they portrayed leadership skills as something else that might have been positional. But leadership is influencing, our kids are stepping up. And I just want to commend Dr. Gully for the work that she's doing. It's been difficult work, but so rewarding. Next year, we're going to take a field trip to the Celebration of Knowledge because you have to experience that as trustees. To see how our kids are competing with themselves in terms of improving their leadership skills is not about prizes. It's, it's just something that we need, you need to experience.
Thank you.
We'll move now to business, and the next item is an action item to conduct a public hearing on the overall school budget and tax rates for the 2324 fiscal year. So we will close our regular meeting, and at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you're here and you wish to address this board regarding the proposed school budget and tax rate for the fiscal year 2324, we'll hear from you at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and we'll reopen our regular meeting. I guess we'll hear from Mr. Prado now. Next item is to approve the budget for the 2324 school year. Mr. Prado.
Good evening, President Everett, board members, Dr. Rivera. Congratulations to the three new board members and your new positions. Take a small break and get right back to work. We're counting on you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Under the Tax Education Code, we it is required that we have a public hearing. And thank you very much, President Everett, for opening that meeting and closing it. I will share some information related to the budget before we actually vote on the budget. And so I will quickly go through a few slides here for the consumption of of the public. Again, this is a small agenda, but we'll talk quickly about the general operating fund budget, how we came up with it. It will include some assumptions on the revenue side and also on the expense side, the legal requirements that we are by the Tax Education Code have to meet, and a little bit of the trends of how we're in terms of daily average attendance and property values and what our tax rates are. And then I'll quickly go in through the three budgets that by legally you have to adopt tonight. So with that said, the proposed general operating budget is for fiscal year 2324. And of course, we cannot spend any dollars until the board considers the proposed budget and adopts it. On the expenditure side or on the revenue side this year, some of the assumptions we really as a team, through the superintendent and cabinet, we wanted to propose a balanced budget, which is what you'll see tonight. Also, we'll discuss student enrollment projections, average daily attendance, and some of the tax rates that are impacted in this budget as well. Taxable values, I will briefly discuss that and see where our trends are. On the expense side, we did implement three key priorities that the board has seen before, and it is important for the school district to entertain and fund, and that was security, compensation, and programs. We also did a really deep dive into campus budgets and also central organizations. And I think that was beneficial for our whole process. And also the assumption that we're only going to spend 98% of the budget is included in this budget. The legal requirements was, of course, that we have to post a legal notice on a local newspaper. We did it on Friday, June 2, 2023, in the Daily Commercial Record, and that was 10 days prior to this meeting. We also posted the same comparison budget for next year in our website as required by law. Our budget is July 1 to June 30. And so we will not have a exact tax rate for tonight, but we'll have it at a later time. And also our property values are not final. In the public notice, there are several items that the public can consume. It includes our tax rate, which will remain at .8846 right now as it is today. And then our debt side is at 40 cents. It gives a comparison of proposed budget with last year's appraised values and our tax rates, and also the levy, a comparison of the levy. And I just want to take a moment here to say that the levy is based on market values and also taxable values, which have increased over the last few years. And those taxes are as a result, or a tax bill increase as a result mostly of your property values being appraised at a higher value. And it has nothing to do with the school district raising those appraised values. And it also gives you a quick snapshot of what our fund balances will be for the general operating fund and the debt service. Included in this legal requirement, it is also statutorily required that we include a budget for required postings, which is at $8,000, as well as for lobbying at $9,000. And this budget also meets the requirement for compensatory budgetary statutory requirements. Our average daily attendance, as you can see from the chart, we have in 2001, '22, we're at 92.1%. This current year, we ended at approximately 93%, and the budget is based on 95% for next year. It's one of these things that we ask our parents and communities to really help with getting our kids to campus, not only for economic reasons, but it also impacts our finances as well. Our property values have risen over the last few years quite considerably, as you probably have experienced living in Mesquite. Your property value is probably increasing on a yearly basis. But as you can see in this chart, every year, it has increased by double digits, especially in the last three, three years. And we're anticipating the same because this budget is anticipated to be at a 9%, but I am expecting that it will be a little higher than that. One thing to remember is that this is based on the second preliminary estimated property values that we get from DCAD. We will not have the final values until July 25. But again, you will see the trend currently is at 15.3 billion as the as the taxable value. But I expect this to be decreased as as exemptions continue to go into the systems and also people that are protesting their values as well. So those numbers will change. One of the things I do want to share is that Mesquite ISD has one of the lowest in this chart maintenance and operations tax rate at .8846 compared to the all other districts in Dallas County, except for Garland ISD, and as you can see there, Cedar Hill ISD. We are very competitive. We have to compete against all those other districts that are collecting more dollars by having a higher maintenance and operations tax rate. On the debt side, of course, that has to do with the debt that voters have approved, and that will remain at 40 cents for a total of 1.2846 for next year. But this is extremely important, at least for the Dallas County, to kind of give us a good comparison of where Mesquite is. And we are still, like I said, one of the lowest. What did this budget include? This budget included several items. Obviously, we increased it by almost 31 million, but the majority of it is tied to compensation. You approved the compensation plan earlier in the year, which gave significant raises to our teachers and other staff as well. So the majority of our increases associated with that. There's a couple of other items that we're also including, property insurance. Of course, things get more expensive when you talk about inflation and so on and so forth. I can just tell you that things are getting a heck of a lot more expensive. So it's getting a little tougher. And while we have a balanced budget this year, it will continue to be really tough, especially for next year, if there is no action by the legislative session or the legislators. There were some one-time costs that came off the budget, including, for example, security initiative that we funded at $7 million and other administrative costs, such as building foundation for one-time cost. The proposed budget thus, you will have it here. You can see it is a balanced budget on your far right, with revenue expected to be at 438 million point two, and expenses the same. But as you can see from the approved, as you progress from left to right, the approved budget was a 400 this year. The revised budget that you actually have tonight to consider amending will be at 411.8. So our revenue will increase up to 438. And then on the bottom, you'll see the expenses on the revised budget. A lot of the the reason we're at 394 has to do because we leveraged some ESAR funding to to some of the expenses. We shifted over to ESAR funding. But you will see the next year, we have a $438 million expense budget. On the bottom, you will see that we have some committed items for construction. We have some committed items for health insurance in terms of committed fund balance and also for disaster recovery. So the projected unassigned budget for next year will be the same as we predict at the end of the year at 105 million point five. And that is about three months' worth of expenses. You can see here the fund balance history, just for your digestion. You can see that in 2122, we're 85.4. This is unassigned, and we are predicting that it will be 105 again, point five for next year. The other two budgets that you will consider approving today will be the food service budget. As you can see here, it would be 19.5 million on the revenue side and 25.4 on the expense side. By law, this budget cannot have more than 15% in fund balance. We have planned to spend this down. But additionally, we're also charging indirect costs. That's why you see the revenue number going down from 21.7 anticipated revised budget to 19.5. But it will be a deficit budget for the food services, but it is a planned deficit budget. And then on the debt service, the debt service services all of our debt, which currently we're about $704 million. And again, we collect the collect the point four debt tax rate to to pay our debt. And it will be at 58.7 revenue anticipated, and the expenses will be at 55.6. We do anticipate adding to fund balance at the end of this current year and at the end of next year for a projected fund balance of 76 million. The calendar, of course, tonight, you will consider approving the budget that we proposed. Legally, we've met all the requirements. We will receive the certified property values July 25, and then September 11, we'll consider approving the adopting the tax rate. And with that, the next steps is what I just said, is to consider approving the three budgets that I just presented to you without meeting all the legal requirements from Tax Education Code. And with that, I will ask you to please consider the proposed budget.
Mr. Prado, you and Dr. Cheek and Trey have scrutinized this budget, gone over the numbers many, many times. Do you consider this a good, solid budget?
Yes, sir, I do.
Good. We, as a Board of Trustees, have a fiduciary obligation to maintain the financial integrity of this particular school district, and we take that very seriously. Board, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Prado?
I just want to say thanks for all the work. I I've watched your team over the last couple of months, and it's amazing what work you've done. And I feel very confident in your work, and I appreciate this balanced budget like this. And just want to say thanks to the team.
Thank you.
Good job.
I would like to dittle what he said, but I was going to say a special thanks to everyone in the district that for their effort in identifying those cost savings without impacting the budget overall for our operations. But also to thank Dr. Rivera for his continued focus on meeting our district goal of balancing the budget. But a special thanks, as Gary Bingham said, to you, Mr. Prado, and your excellent staff for a job well done, especially in presenting a structurally balanced budget that meets our commitment and our priorities. We thank you for that. And you did all this in spite of the fact that the legislature did not increase the basic allotment, which is the way they fund our schools. For us to have met the inflationary pressure since 2019, which was the last time they raised the basic allotment, it would have required at least an additional $1,000 basic allotment increase for us just to meet the inflationary pressures that school districts around this state are seeing. And I would tell you, looking at some of the other budgets of other school districts, I'm very pleased with a balanced budget because a lot of others are still can't get to the balanced budget. They are in deficit budgeting at the moment. So thank you and your staff for an excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to echo Mr. Bingham, Mr. Seward's words. The only thing I'm really worried about is making projections based on 95% of ADA when we had 93 last this year, 92 the year before. I know it's all results of we're still recuperating from COVID. But are we putting plans in place? We have to start thinking positive towards getting our kids back in the classroom.
Well, Mr. Carbo, one of the things that we've done when working together with Mr. Morris's department is really hitting the attendance. But if you notice also in some of the conversations that we had, we've also targeting a community connectivity project, which is going to bring our parents, inform our parents, because it's not always about money. I want to make sure that everybody understands, if the kids are not in school, the students are not learning. So it's not about money. It's about getting the students to be in school so they can learn and develop themselves in all areas. And they could only do that if you're in school because the programs are at school. So thank you for bringing that up. We have some plans that Mr. Morris is working with the principals and developing in his department. But alongside of that, we also are expanding. And you named, you saw tonight, the coordinator of family and community engagement. We're going to get out into the community and then start being a little bit more proactive and active about reaching to our parents and educating our community in a lot of other areas as well.
President, should approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the budget for the 2324 fiscal year. Is there any discussion, additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Prado, great job.
Thank you.
Next item is an action item to approve the committing of the fund balance.
Yes, President Everett, board members. This, of course, would require board action as well. I discussed this briefly earlier today. We are uncommitting 7.4 million, 7.5 million dollars from the technology, but we're setting aside another fund for to take this into consideration. We're moving 2.5 into increasing the self-insurance committed fund balance. That will make it to 7.5. And also the disaster recovery by 2.5 million, which again will remain at or will increase to 7.5 million. And uncommitting 2.5 million dollars to be going into the unassigned fund balance.
I have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Ms. Hornsby to approve the committing of the fund balance. Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item to approve the budget amendment for the 2223 fiscal year budget.
Thank you, President Everett, board members. This one will require, again, we're amending the final budget amendment for three funds, the general operating fund, the food service, and the debt service. And we are aligning revenues with our best projections and also our expenses. I will make a couple of comments related to the general operating fund. We will be adding approximately over $20 million to the fund balance, which I said earlier, it is about 105 point something, 5 million dollars we're anticipating. Again, there's still a lot of work done, but these are the best projections at this time. And once those numbers are final and audited, we will share that with you as well.
Mr. Prado, just for the record, can you can you specify why we're adding that to the fund balance? Because I want to be clear that people understand when they watch this board meeting.
Yes, sir. So this year, we took advantage, we leveraged significant dollars from ESAR funds to the tune of a net of 25 million dollars, where we shifted expenses over to ESAR. We will not have that next year, most likely. So again, you always hear about the fiscal cliff. A lot of districts are talking about that. So we're very carefully leveraging those dollars and how we spend those dollars. Additionally, we, one of the, one of the things that helped us a lot is in the district. Thank you to the community and to you. You should applaud yourselves for working so hard to pass the TRE, which brought us additional revenue and increased our tax rate to .8846. So that was significant revenue that will continue coming into the district. And thoroughly, of course, we implemented indirect costs, charging some indirect costs to grants this year. And that is bringing in some revenue to the district to service those items for us providing the services and managing those grants. Again, while ESAR will not be there, and it will be a lot more difficult next year, especially if there is no action by the legislators in Austin, we will be in a very, you asked me earlier, President Everett, if I felt comfortable with this budget. I do, but I certainly don't feel comfortable moving forward.
So everybody that's listening, ESAR funds are the federal monies we got because of COVID. And your team went back and scrubbed our budget and our expenses and reassigned a lot of those. So we take full advantage of all that before it goes away.
That's correct.
And that made a huge difference, plus the T and the Tax Real Act.
Yes.
Elections is huge. So thank you for the voters, but thank you for going back and looking and scrubbing that budget again.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the 105 million that you're considering, the fund balance is going to be, that represents basically the three-month expenses that we have.
That is correct.
Which is really what the state recommends that all of us carry.
Yes, sir. And that is, that helps us in the lean months of the year. So it's not all always there available as we go through ebbs and flows of the cash flow when we get our revenues. So it definitely helps us have enough money so that we can pay our bills.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Ms. Collier and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the budget amendment for the 2223 fiscal year budget. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Prado, thank you again for the great work you and your staff are doing for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, that's the last item on our agenda this evening. Board, do you have anything else to add?
I have a curious question, if anybody wants to throw it out. There's a lot of, there's a lot of leadership experience on this board over the years. My question, does anybody remember, does anybody of a bottom tier to remember what the annual budget was their first year on the board? Does anybody remember? I mean, we've only been on a while, but some, some of the.
Less than 200 million. He was less than 200 million, I believe.
Well, Bobby goes back, back to the 1950s. In 91, it was less than 100 million dollars.
Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
So we've come a long way and we're going in the right direction as well.
And inflation.
Well, board, the time is now 7:51 PM and with no other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.